Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Eric Eldridge, the Chair. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS, and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. At this point, I would like all those who can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Start with Board introductions. Why don't we start to my right this time?
Good evening, Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Katerina Calabocas.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Okay, we've got quite a jam-packed agenda, but we're going to try to get through it very quickly. Can we start with meeting minutes?
I move the Select Board review and approve the regular session meeting minutes for April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries five zero zero.
I move that the Select Board review, approve, but not release, the executive session meeting minutes for April twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries five zero zero. Okay, citizen business time. Are there any citizens that are not on the agenda who would like to speak? We have some items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go right into, we're going to try to do something a little bit different. We're actually going to do the Town Manager Report in the slot that it's supposed to be going in.
Throwing me for a curveball.
Wow.
All right.
Don't disappoint.
I won't, I won't. We are actively hiring for three positions. We're currently looking for a full-time public safety dispatcher and a full-time town planner/economic development director. The job postings for both those positions can be found on the town's website. We're also preparing to post for a full-time patrol officer position within the Police Department, following the resignation of Officer Marissa Eastwood, who is relocating to Maine. We thank her for her service and wish her well in her next department. I want to thank all of the residents who attended our annual town meeting last week. The two hundred and fifteenth Annual and Special Town Meeting considered twenty-eight articles, of which twenty-five were approved, one was disapproved, and two were withdrawn. Most notably, Town Meeting approved a forty-eight-point-eight-million-dollar operating budget, which represented modest but strategic growth in critical service areas, maintained conservative approaches to revenue, and was cognizant of the financial challenges that everybody is feeling. Additionally, Town Meeting approved a zoning amendment that adopted multifamily overlay districts that were compliant with the MBTA Communities Act and minimized potential impacts on Tingsboro. I also want to thank Acting Moderator Bill Grammer, the Tingsboro Media Department, and most importantly, the Tingsboro Public Schools Facility Staff, who accommodated us by setting up the room and promptly breaking it down following the meeting. The Northern Middlesex Council of Governments will host the Digital Equity Charrette on Thursday, May sixteenth, at six P. M. at the Old Town Hall at Ten Kendall Road. This is part of the Greater Lowell Digital Equity Initiative, which is a regional effort to ensure equitable digital access across Greater Lowell. The event is open to all and is geared to be a forum to help understand our regional needs. With the help of NIMCOG, we'll kick off the update on our housing production plan on Wednesday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. There will be a kickoff meeting at six P. M. We've invited members of the Select Board, Planning Board, and Affordable Housing Trust, but all residents with an interest in housing are invited to attend. The program will be at the Old Town Hall. As a reminder, we were awarded a thirty-thousand-dollar technical assistance grant to utilize NIMCOG for this update. The building conditions and space assessment project for both the Police and Fire Departments is moving along. We've completed the space assessment portion of the project and expect our final report on that front in the next week. The conditions assessment and prioritized capital plan for each building is also wrapping up. A key takeaway from the space assessment is confirmation that the fire station is more than three times undersized compared to where it should be, and the Police Department is nearly two times undersized. An additional challenge in the Fire Department is that there's no clear delineation or room to delineate hot zones and cold zones as it relates to decontamination, which poses long-term health issues. The other thing that came out of this report is it almost to a T matched the needs assessment that was done in two thousand and eighteen by Tecton. And then just a reminder that the town election will take place on Tuesday, May twenty-first. Early voting started today and will continue throughout the rest of the week here in the community room. Polls will be open on Election Day from seven A. M. to eight P. M. You can visit tingsbrowma.gov to learn more about where you vote and to view a sample ballot.
Before we get into questions or others, so, early voting has started?
Correct.
In person?
In person.
And do we know what the days are?
Yes, it's the rest of this week matching town hall's hours. So if town halls open, you can come and vote. So tomorrow, you can early vote between eight-thirty A. M. and four-thirty P. M. On Wednesday, between eight-thirty A. M. and seven P. M. And on Thursday, between eight A. M. and four P. M.
Thank you. All right. Kat, did you want to go and do yours? And then we'll, then we'll open it up.
Sounds good. Today, we received proposals for document scanning and digitization services for the Tingsboro, Tucksbury, and Billerica Health Departments. The towns are utilizing the Public Health Excellence Grant to scan and digitize their records. As noted in the past, there are a series of annual service and supply contracts that the town issues across our general government departments. These contracts are generally for one year with two one-year extensions at the sole discretion of the town and are competitively procured. This allows us to lock in favorable pricing and avoid having to rebid these contracts annually. I won't read them, but the following contracts have been extended by the Town Manager for one additional year. The Sherburne Ave Open Space Committee met on May first to review the plans for Phase One of the site amenities at the new recreation property off Sherburne Ave. Town Meeting approved eight-hundred thousand in CPC funding at the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Town Meeting to fund recreational activities such as pickleball courts, bocce, shuffleboard, and pitch and putt. Overall, it was a productive meeting that led into some minor changes to the plans. The committee is meeting this week to get confirmation on additional details before finalizing the plans in the coming weeks. Bids are due May fifteenth for the two thousand and twenty-four Roads Program Phase Two, which includes a full-depth reclamation and repayment of a segment of Oregon and Nevada Road. And bids are due for the bicentennial field maintenance on May twenty-second. The Highway Department will continue to mow and maintain the fields up until June first, where the awarded contractor will then take over the responsibility until this November. The town opted to include in the bid form an optional two-year extension, so we can lock in favorable pricing and avoid having to rebid this contract annually.
Thank you. I will open up to the Board for questions, comments. Mr. Schneider?
No, no questions as this time, Mr. Chair.
Also, the only, go ahead. I'm going to let you guys go first.
I have no questions or comments.
I do. I just was curious about what a charrette was, charrette? I just wanted to, like a party or something that they're throwing?
Sort of, yes. It's a thought party.
Okay.
It's like a, it's not a lecture-style event, it's more of a discussion where you toss ideas back and forth. Great question, though.
Yeah, it's a new word to me. I just haven't heard that before, so thank you.
Good question. Love it. For the Police and Fire, are we going to get any recommendations as to short-term things that we can do?
Yes. For starters, the biggest reason why we did this, we will get an order-of-magnitude capital plan for the building, mechanical and everything. In terms of how we can better utilize the space, we will get some on the Police. The reality is on the Fire, there's really nothing that we can do over there right now to accommodate any additional space use. The biggest reason being, we already don't have the ability for a firefighter returning from a fire to enter the bay, go into a hot zone where he could, he or she could decontaminate and then leave. There's really, in our current building, aside from potentially clearing out the lower level, which isn't even finished, there's really not much that we can do. So I don't expect any feasible space recommendations on the Fire side. There are some minor things we can do on the Police side, but the biggest, the biggest takeaway is going to be, because for the last five years, as we've discussed, we've kind of put off any serious maintenance on the buildings, as we discussed their future, we'll now finally have a professionally-developed capital plan. And the updated space assessment will help us, the last actions of the Public Safety Building Study Committee were that now's not the time financially, but recommend that the Select Board begin to look at parcels of land where a future standalone station or combined station could go. Using what we're getting out of this report, we'll be able to narrow down the sites that would accommodate it. Obviously, there'll be some discussion about whether we're looking to accommodate single buildings or combined, but that's going to be the biggest takeaway.
Okay, so, I understand that we can't, we can't do anything within the current footprint of the buildings, but is there space, like, like in Fire, like, behind it? Because they're so jammed in there, is, are they looking at that, the complete property that's there, obviously? Okay.
My apologies. They will also be including a site, a potential site plan and a block layout of how you could potentially add in addition. It is still our opinion, it's not feasible on the site, given turning rates, but they will provide one for the town to look at.
And that's all I, I just wanted, I mean, I know that, I didn't expect that, within that building footprint, that we were going to have much by way of options, but I was, we at least need to look and see what it is outside of that, the existing building. And if it's not feasible, great, at least we know what's not feasible and go from there. I think that was, oh, the only other question on bicentennial field maintenance, what happens, I mean, we've been doing it? The town has been doing it? Is that becoming too much of a burden on us?
The thought process was, not right now. Once we have to start maintaining the Sherburne Road open space parcel, and our thought process was, the fields have to be cut to a precise level. And so what we ran into last summer was, highway got carried away with something else, it rained a lot, the grass wasn't at the right length. If they missed two or three days at the Sherburne Road open space parcel, the impact is far less than if the fields aren't mowed. So we'll go back to having a contractor professionally mow bicentennial field and use our resources over at the Sherburne Road parcel.
Perfect. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, any other questions? Good. All right. Let's move on to, Jake, come on up and let's talk presentation on the status of the road maintenance program. I know this may come as a shock, but this is the number-one thing that residents care about, is the roads. So, thank you for coming in, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Good evening. So, as we head into this year's Roads Program, a road season which includes preservation, I just wanted to give a brief update on the preservation treatments that were completed during the FY twenty-three Roads Program. So, in FY twenty-three, we performed preservation treatments in the Appaloosa neighborhood, Farwell Road, Locust Ave, and Elthea Ave. The preservation types included rubber chip seal, cape seal, which is either a rubber chip or a conventional chip seal with an overlay, and then we also did a cape seal over asphalt. So just a wide variety of different treatment types. And so far, driving through those neighborhoods, they appear to be holding up very well, so it's just a good opportunity for us to be able to just touch a lot more road miles while saving costs over conventional, like, typical milling fills or reclaim projects. So, as you can see, just to kind of dive into the different treatment types, so in those pictures, one's a rubber chip, it's a treated aggregate, which helps it adhere to the emulsion that gets put down, and then the other picture is just a conventional chip, which is just a regular aggregate put into an emulsion that helps it adhere to the roadway. If you go to the next slide, these are just pictures of the operation. For the rubber chip seal, it comes out as an emulsion at about three hundred and fifty degrees, and then the rubber chips get applied, which is a mixture, I believe the emulsion is recycled tire, and then the treated chips get dropped in and then instantly rolled. What's great about this treatment type is you can open it to traffic as soon as you lay down the chips. It actually helps compact the chips into the emulsion. The next slide. So this is the microsurface that was applied throughout the Appaloosa neighborhood and as well as Elthea. It just provides a much smoother riding surface, so we thought it was a good option within the neighborhoods, especially if you're, you know, walking a dog or riding a bike. And then the next slide. So this is Shetland Circle and Elthea Ave after a year or through one winter. Photos, you can't really tell, but it does, it is holding up very well and looks, looks good. And then the, the next one, that's Farwell Road and Locust Ave. So this is just a regular rubber chip, it didn't get the, the microsurface. I didn't feel that it was necessary since it was a main road, but it is smoothing out and appears to kind of just look like asphalt, but it's holding up very well after one year. And then as we go into our Roads Program for this year, we're going to be kind of changing it up, we're going to be introducing a new preservation type, which is the bonded-wearing course. It is a thin asphalt overlay, but the difference with traditional overlays is that they apply a tack coat, which is just a material that helps bond the asphalt to the surface, so, but they apply about three to four times more tack coat than traditional paving. And then also, prior to doing that, we're going to be doing some other extensive patchwork, shimming, just to get the road back to a nice profile before we apply the bonded-wearing course. And just to kind of give some numbers, that project is going to touch upon two miles of roadway at about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars versus, we're just wrapping up Patriot Road, which is about one mile of roadway at just under a million, just to give a perspective on that. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, if I could just quickly reiterate, as I do every time the roads come up, the, in layman's terms, the reason that we've started to introduce these preservation methods is because, as Jake just pointed out, the difference in just shy of a mile, if a full-depth reclamation versus two miles of preservation, is that while we know there are still roads out there that are in failed condition, what we had been doing in Tingsboro for so long was focusing only on failed roads, and if you only focus on the failed roads, the roads that are in moderate to poor condition quickly then become failed roads, and now our backlog of these failed roads becomes far too costly for us to ever get, ever get to. By doing it this way, we are addressing the worst-conditioned roads, but also preventing other roads from falling into it. And I know that if you live on a failed road, that is no consolation at all, but when you think about your drive throughout Tingsboro, this preservation method has certainly had a very positive impact on the overall network.
Thank you. All right, I'll open up to the Board. Questions, comments? Mr. Schneider, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, at, at Town Meeting, it was, it was painfully obvious that, that roads are first and foremost in everyone's mind, right? And I think everybody is seeing the various potholes, you know, all over town. Any sense when, when we can, when we can let people know that, that some of that work will be happening? I know it's ongoing, but is there a sort of a timeline for, for addressing the potholes versus not the resurfacing, but just fixing some of the?
I do know the Highway Department is out every day filling potholes. I did actually meet with them this afternoon to address some isolated areas on Old Ting Road. So they are working through addressing as much as they can.
Yeah. And how does that rubber seal hold up? Is it, does it last?
It does last. I mean, before introducing this into Tingsboro, I did go to several communities that have used this treatment type, one ranging from about eight years ago, which is still holding up very well, to, I believe, in Groton, they did that treatment either one or two years ago, and it's holding up.
And, and those chips are recycled tires?
I believe that's what's in the emulsion that gets applied, but the chips themselves are treated aggregate, but the emulsion that comes out at about three hundred and fifty degrees is made up of recycled tire.
Good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I was, excuse me, I was on the Master Plan Committee, and we asked the residents what the biggest issue was, and even Beverly Woods, who was the NIMCOG Director, was shocked when it became the roads and it was like eighty percentile, right? So, we've known the roads have been the, the hot-button issue. When I first got on the Board, we did Kendall Road, a section of Kendall Road, just before it gets to the bridge there, and I think it was point-seven-three miles, and it was three hundred thousand dollars. So at point-seven-three miles with eighty miles' worth of roads, we were like on a hundred-year plan at that point. And at three hundred thousand, that wasn't nearly enough. So now what we've done is we've not only quadrupled the road fund, but we actually have, you know, we have the funds to do that through different mechanisms, the marijuana, the state, the operational budget, and we have multiple streams of revenue going in there, so we know we can sustain at least the quadrupling, you know, of the roads. The thing that's really helped us out, too, is, as Jake had mentioned, the conventional methods is what we've, we had always done before Jake got here, and he introduced and did a lot of research on alternative methods, which, which he just went through today, the chip seal and everything else, which has really allowed us to pave a lot more roads. I think the example you gave, you know, between Patriot and then the, you know, this coming year with the chip sealer, whichever alternative method you have there, it, you know, we get four times the road done. Of course, it's in a little bit better condition, but that just gives the residents some idea of how we've really been expanding this. And I think the last thing I saw, you were going to touch like, I think it was like eight miles of roads last year or something through different methods. So, you know, we were way behind, is the message, right? And so in order to catch up or at least be able to sustain ourselves and then hopefully start gaining traction, you know, now we actually have the quadrupling of the road funds, and it looks like we can do that at least for the next three years with everything that we have, and that should help out immensely. So, Jake, can't help you enough, can't thank you enough, I'm sorry, for everything you've done, the research you did, and I've gone on each one of those roads where you've done the alternative methods, and I think they look great. I was kind of shocked that Elthea looked as good as it did, because it was, it was like one of the worst roads around. It was like almost a country road, you know, that I don't think it'd been done in like fifty years, and somehow it came out really nice. So, can't thank you enough, and thank you for the update.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Moran?
No, I'm good. Nice work.
Thank you.
Hi, Jake. Thank you for the presentation. Do you know what the next couple of roads is going to be?
For this year, it's going to be Frost, Lakeview Ave, between Coburn and Parham, then Parham into the town line, and then for the reclamation projects, it's going to be Oregon full-length and Nevada full-length.
Okay. And if somebody wanted to look up their road, where would they go?
They could go to our website, where it lists the five-year capital, and then what I'm working on now is adding on the additional three years, and then we're just going to be having a rolling five-year capital plan, so every year it's going to get updated with that additional year that was completed.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks again for the presentation. I thought that this was important, even well before Town Meeting, because this comes up quite a bit, and I think it's important to, not only are we working on things, but we sit there and say, okay, how did it hold up over the winter? Because not every winter is, is the same. We've had some, knock on wood, relatively mild winters, but the plows, they can, they can cause some challenges, and I think it's, it's important that we, we show people that, okay, here's, here's what it did, here's a part of the plan. I do think, as Mr. Cohane said, it would be great if we could just snap our fingers and we had all the roads, you know, working great, but we've got a lot of miles of roads, and, you know, we only have so much capacity, not only in, in money, but also in resources to manage this, because, you know, you can't just grab a bunch of contractors and tear them loose. There is work that needs to be done in advance, there's things that need to happen in supervising those folks and making sure that they're doing a quality job, and then following up, and, and that takes a lot of time and effort. I do think that the new DPW will help. I think having that, you know, you know, all those resources to bear in one department, I think will help. One thing I did have a question on, so, potholes. People call the, the Highway Department, and, and the response is, they come right out. Why do they come right out, and what is the, and you can weigh in, because I know you gave me the answer, and it makes perfect sense. Why do they come right out, and why is it that, you know, what they put down doesn't last?
It depends on when they're coming out. So if it's the wintertime and they're coming out during the winter, the only material that's available is cold patch, and unfortunately, that material doesn't hold up. And then during the, right now, spring and summer, they are able to utilize their hotbox and put out asphalt. Again, they're, in some instances, they are just filling potholes, you know, areas that are blown out around a catch basin or a manhole. Depending on the, the prep work in some areas, you know, will require more extensive work, which is what we're looking to do on Old Ting, just to have it hold up a little longer. But during the wintertime is when you're going to see a pothole reappear after they patch it, just because of the material that's available.
Yeah, go ahead, Colin, if you want to, if you want to give a little bit further.
Part of the reason that we have to go out is because if you put the town on notice about a defect in the roadway, we all, we have a liability issue. So if you say, I've got a pothole on Old Ting, if, even if we know that in two days the rain's going to wash away whatever we put over a snowstorm is, if we don't respond to the alleged defect and somebody bursts a tire on it, for insurance purposes, we now have a liability issue. It also, depending on the size of the pothole, becomes a safety issue if people are swerving into the other lane of traffic to avoid it, if they hit it and swerve off to the side of the road because they don't know what just happened. So it may seem silly that we come out, particularly right before a snowstorm, but there's a liability thing to it. The other thing that Jake's talking about on Old Ting Road is two or three years ago, capital-approved small paving equipment for the Highway Department, and every summer they go out and do patches of rec milling and real paving work, more than just filling potholes. Obviously, we're limited due to staffing constraints, but they do, I think last summer, they were out there quite a bit, the summer before, they certainly were as well. So when, when they have these roads that are becoming problems, they work with Jake to figure out if it's possible to use the equipment we have without hiring a contractor to address them.
Yeah, and I think that's important, because like, even on the, you know, the potholes, you know, oftentimes, that phone call happens, we've had heavy rains that washed away something, and now we've got a big pothole. Well, when, the best time to fix that pothole is not when you've got a big puddle of water in there, but yet, we have to address that immediate need. So, you know, I think it's one of those things that residents need to be aware of the, the physics involved and that a little bit of patience on some of those things, that yeah, sometimes we are just filling it in so that somebody's, it's not a safety issue short-term, but we then have to address it more long-term, and that's when we have to deal with different equipment and different options that are there. So I think, I think it's just important that people understand that whole process, because, you know, people say, oh, they came out and it didn't do anything, and now it's still a problem. And they think that it's, you know, they're doing a bad job, and it's, it's really just because you're in a no-win situation. We have a situation where there's a, there's a pothole, you can't ultimately fix it right in that moment, but you can't not do anything about it. So I thought that was also important for, for people to understand. I'm glad that you are updating the five, in having a rolling five-year plan. I think that there are a lot of questions that come up, and select person Calabocas said, you know, you can go on the website, you can look at those things. I think it's important that, that people understand that that's there and it will be updated, because a lot of people say, oh, my road's not on there, and I have a really bad road. It's like, yep, I know, I have a, I have a bad road. I, I sit there- I, I sit there and, but mine is not as bad as these others. And so, you know, I think it's just a matter of sitting there and having a master plan. I think it's critical, I, I think it's great that you, what you've done with the plan and then now we're executing on it. So glad to hear that these things are working. Sounds like we're looking at newer ways in which we can continue to address not just the failed roads, but some of those that need to be addressed before they get to fail.
Yep, thank you.
And I would, I hope that we have an opportunity in the fall that you can come back and tell us how we did in this. So we keep going on because I do think it is something that, um, we need to keep people apprised of, you know, hey, here's what's happening.
Absolutely.
So thank you for coming in. Did anybody have anything else?
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Jake, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, Colin, did we wanna address the item not on the agenda?
Yep, I, I had, asked Barbara to come out to talk a little bit about all the things that are happening at the Council on Aging. Um, so Barbara, if you wanna come on up.
Certainly. Good evening.
Good evening.
So he, you know, Colin asked me to come out and give an update. I haven't been out here, well, in front of the board for like eighteen months. So I probably should be more regularly, but we have had a lot of transition in that time. And back then I had put down some initiatives that I had put forth with my board for things that we wanted to accomplish. And one was get the word out, like what we do at the center, you know, that we're not just for, you know, bingo and breakfasts. So there's, there's a lot of services that we provide and I always, um, tell people that our main job is to link needs with services. So I don't know everything, but I can help you get to the right person. So we had started, there was a few things, I did a countdown to sixty-five last fall. Had people from social security and to talk about Medicare and different things as people are aging and, you know, getting, getting to the age. I'm not that far away. We're, we're, I'm working towards the National Senior Center Accreditation. Several years ago, when, um, I received my certification, they had changed the whole process through the Mass Councils on Aging. And to include in that process, so it was, you know, my notebook's like this big. And it, it goes through all these different steps. So part of the things when they rebooted the certification process was to include some of the things that will already jumpstart for the national accreditation. So, I mean, it's just a, there's, what did I tell you, like eight towns, nine towns in Massachusetts that are nationally accredited. And that's it, in all of, that's three hundred and fifty-seven towns in Mass. And when I had gotten certified, I think there's only like thirteen certified directors, directors in Massachusetts also. So, you know, all these things, I wanna just keep getting us on there, letting us, letting everybody know what we do. Trying to get, um, aged, aged dementia friendly town, wanna get on that list too. So I want all these things to say Tingsboro is, is a great community for, for anybody to come in. Uh, not only just the schools, but the, in the elderly, with all the things that we have to offer at the senior center. Cause we had sent out the flyer to everybody in town last year that had all the things that we do at the center. And so that's probably something that maybe in a couple of years we do it again, cause it was paid through the formula grant that we get from the state. So, and we're getting back to bigger than pro, pre-COVID numbers in the center. So even our average daily attendance from year to year is up eighteen percent. So we're, we're growing, um, although there's a lot from out of town. And I don't know if it's our location or just that we're just a, a friendly group, but about thirty-five percent of the people that come to the senior center are not from Tingsboro. So it, our, our name is spread across, you know, all of the other towns. You know, we get Drakeet and Chelmsford and Lowell and, and, but then we do have a some in, in New Hampshire that come down every day. There's some people, every single day they're there and they don't live in town. So there's something that we're doing right. And I like to think that, you know, cause we tell people, come in, sit down, go have some coffee. Actually, uh, the chief how just reached out to me, we're gonna start a monthly coffee with the chief. So, and I say, do it on a Tuesday morning, it's always really busy. So, you know, as, we're just gonna continue, we have, um, lots of events that are happening all the time. Um, we are gonna need a, to hire a new outreach worker, cause Shalene had passed away last, um, a few weeks ago. And she was very, very valuable. And that's paid through the formula grant as well for her hours. So I'll talk to Bridget and set something up. And we're just growing and having fun. So we do have fun. So if there's, whenever we have events, like big events, we just had Mother's Day on Friday. And we had a non-alcoholic wine tasting. And a friend of mine donated all the non-alcoholic wine and he poured it. And we had this big dinner and there was forty-five people. So we're getting more and more, getting the crowds back for just a Friday lunch. And everyone had a blast. Well, and part of the thing too is a lot of, as we get older, we're on all kinds of meds. And a lot of people that used to maybe enjoy a bottle, a glass of wine with dinner, may not be able to do that. So why not try the non-alcoholic? So, that's all, that's all I have. If you have any questions for me?
I'll, I'll open, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, just one thing, one of the things that I was gonna say that I've been challenging Barbara to do, but she's been doing it largely on her own, is thinking about how we can leverage what we're already doing in different ways. And so this was, I think, the first year in at least a while that we offered the bus as a shuttle for May Town Meeting. Nobody signed up this year, but perhaps as it becomes more of a regular thing, that's something that we have access to the vans. We've been, um, the fire department is training on using the van so that they can use those in a mass casualty incident to evacuate people. Or heaven forbid if there was at a fire where we needed to get vulnerable people into a warm, um, shelter. Same thing with the facilities, obviously with this board's support, we've started using the building for non-COA events outside of their regular hours. So we're really just trying to find ways to utilize what's already there. Barbara knows that the trends are changing, she's staying on top of what people are interested in. And I wanted to note that, you know, you hear that people from out of town are coming to the center. A lot of what the center does is funded by that state formula grant. So it's not like we're over leveraging Tingsboro's operating budget for people who don't live in Tingsboro. It's a reci-, it's a reciprocal thing, you can go to Chelmsford, you can go to Tucksbury, you can go to Drakeet. But a lot of what the center does is out of donations, um, from local groups, local businesses and the formula grant as well, so.
Yeah, and the LRTA grant.
Yes.
Yeah, cause actually the town only pays like forty-three percent of what it takes to, to, you know, run the operations that we do there. With the limited staff, but we have fun.
So relative to that, um, it, to piggyback off what Colin was talking about, for donations, where do people go? Do they just reach out to you if they're interested in donating? If local businesses or individuals?
Yes, we, well, we get a lot of, um, donations of stuff.
Donations in kind for those.
Yeah, we, we get a lot, you know, people will donate even paper goods so for, and books and magazines and, you know, everything, you name it. Puzzles, um, we do get, um, some donations occasionally and we have a donation account. People can, you know, like the, um, for a while that people would do in memory of, you know, if they're gonna give in, you know, we send them a thank you and it goes in the donation account. We recently got something from Lowell Five, like four thousand dollars. We haven't quite decided what we're gonna do with that, cause we wanna try to find a way to reach as many seniors as we can. And we're, we've been banging around on the board like, all right, what can we do? Um, how can we help? They're like the greatest number of people. And the Lions Club is gonna donate like five hundred dollars for food, cause they do a food drive. Cause at the end of the year, we do two big things where we give out, um, bags of food to people around the holidays. So, I mean, we, you know, they, it comes in here and there and sometimes you just don't know. And all of a sudden it's like, oh, all right, like the four thousand dollars that we just got. So we just haven't quite put our finger on it.
So we'll take money, we will take, you know, puzzles, games?
Everything, yeah.
And they would just, if they go on the, the website under Community Services, under the Senior Center, there's, there's information out there? Is there a, um, like a calendar of events? Where would they go to find out?
Yes.
What's happening?
Yeah, yeah, and we got, the newsletter goes up there, I'm not sure if it's up there, I just, well, I'm just, we just sent out.
We publish the newsletter regularly on the town's website.
Yeah, and that has a calendar of events in there. Yeah.
Just trying to get information out there for people.
And you have something neighbor to neighbor too, which goes out to every household.
Correct. And then we, we have, one of my board members is, has had volunteered that once a month when we get our newsletters, to go distribute them to some, you know, the post office, some of the banks or local businesses and just so that, there's a couple of newsletters there if somebody's sitting there and go, oh, should check it out.
I'll open up to the rest of the board. Um, questions, comments?
Um, no, I just echo what, what we've said, you know, every way you communicate is, is valuable. So do as many as you can, as often as you can, because you can't over communicate. You know, the, the neighbor to neighbor, the, the town website, the putting them in, 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 you know, populous spots around town.
Yeah.
I think all of those hit different folks.
Yes.
And I think those are all important. So thank you, it was, that's great.
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, thank you very much, I have no, no further questions.
So just thank you for what you do and what the, um, the facility and all the people who participate in that, uh, you know, good outcomes, so.
Yeah, it's good.
Likewise, thank you for coming to present today and I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, thanks for the update. Um, we'll figure out how we get updates on a more regular basis.
Yeah.
Colin will have that on his list.
Yes.
Yeah, well, like six months or something, maybe every six months I can come out and just.
Perfect.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to new business. Uh, we'll start with the, uh, request for select board endorsement. Did you wanna, Colin, how are we doing this?
I think that if Carolyn wants to come up, she can present the request to the board.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, good evening.
My name's Carolyn Scafidi and I reside at, uh, Thirteen Lynn Avenue. I'm a retired educator and work hot time for my union, which is the Massachusetts Teachers Association, as a senate district coordinator for First Middlesex. In my role, I help bring together educators, community members and their legislators to advocate for public education in our communities. I specifically work with Senator Ed Kennedy and Representative Colleen Gary and other legislators in this First Middlesex District to discuss legislation that's vital to public education from preschool through higher education. That's why I'm here tonight, I'm here to ask you to pass the Higher Ed For All Resolution. Before I continue, I wanna thank Senator Kennedy, uh, representatives from Lowell Rodney Elliott, Vanna Howard and Radimam, Representative James Arciero from Westford and Representative Margaret Scarsdale from Dunstable, Pepperell, Townsend, Lunenburg and Ashby for co-sponsoring the Cherish Act, which is an integral part of the Higher Ed For All legislation. I'd like to thank Colin Lozelle for providing you with the information of the Higher Ed For All and the Cherish Act for tonight's meeting. Uh, this information will supplement my brief presentation tonight, because I am not really the expert on this. But, okay, to start with, the Higher Ed For All is a vision for high-quality, debt-free, public higher education. It includes four pillars. One, recruit and retain high-quality faculty and staff. Two, debt-free, public higher education. Three, increase student support. And four, green, healthy and safe buildings. We can win Higher Ed For All through the passage of the Cherish Act and through additional investment in public higher education within the state budget, including through the usage of the Fair Share Amendment Funds. We can fund this vision through the use of Fair Share Amendment Funds, which is earmarked for funding transportation and public education, pre-K to higher education. The amount of fair share amount, money is increasing yearly. Funding Higher Ed For All would require a multi-year phase-in during FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. Much of this has already started with free tuition and fees at our state community colleges for students over twenty-five years old. It's important to note that the cost at Tingsboro for supporting this resolution is absolutely nothing. Because public higher education is funded by the state, it will actually help bring new money from the state. When the state invests in New Mass Lowell and Middlesex Community College, they're investing in the future of the residents and neighboring districts. Supporting this resolution shows that the Tingsboro community agrees with the vision for high-quality, debt-free, public higher education. Tingsboro students deserve to attend a local public college or university debt-free. When our Massachusetts students attend a Massachusetts public higher education institution, they are far more likely to stay in Massachusetts to start their lives, build a career, buy a home, a car and contribute to the local community economy. I looked up Mass Department of Education high school enrollment data for our local high school. There are ninety-five seniors who will be graduating this year. Need to make sure that these students are able to pursue an education debt-free. In total, the high school has four hundred and twenty students. These four hundred and twenty students, including the ninety-five soon to be graduates, should all have access to high-quality, debt-free, public higher education in Massachusetts and more locally at New Mass Lowell, Northern Essex Community College, Middlesex Community College, North Shore Community College and Salem State. By signing on to this resolution, you're showing the legislature that they need to prioritize public higher education funding and legislation. Thank you, and I hope you vote for supporting this Higher Ed For All Resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, so I guess I will open up to the board for questions. Do you wanna start this time so we don't go the same way every time? Try to mix it up a little, or am I catching you on the spot?
Sure, that's okay, I'll start, maybe we can start and go back around that way, really, just kinda.
All right, now you're getting silly.
Yeah, um, no, so I guess my first question would be, um, what is it exactly that you're looking for from us as a board? What action are you looking for us to take?
Okay, just to sign on to this resolution and then signing on to it, just saying that you're supporting this and then it will go to the state legislator, I'll deliver it to, and our state represent, is, uh, Representative Colleen Gary. So I would bring it to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, um, I just have a, just a clarification, not to be mean about it or anything, but, um, free money from the state is still our tax dollars. So it's, we still pay income tax that the state takes.
Correct, yes.
And they just redistribute it. So it's not free to Tingsboro, cause we're all working and still paying taxes as a employee of somewhere or employers. And I, I guess the question I have of this is, in, in total and whole, um, this is for, right now, I think the first phase of it looks to be just for the community college level.
Yes.
But it looks like there's a multi-year plan to then just make it more the university level.
Yes, correct, yes.
Do you think that eventually it would cover graduate level?
It's a good question, I can find that out. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, yeah, just a question I have, cause.
But I will find out for you.
I'd just be curious, you can do that or have Colleen Gary or yourself reach out to.
Okay.
He can funnel the information to us. Um, those are just the only questions that I had.
Thank you. All right, now Mr. Schneider, I'm not, I'll sipping with the Cohane?
Well, I'm coming back to him.
Yes, he is.
All right.
You are, you are correct.
Good, good observation.
I, I, you caught me completely off guard. Thank you, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
So where in the process are we on this resolution? Do you know, like, do you have any sense of how many towns or communities have, have signed on to this at this point? Is this still early?
Yes, I mean, right now there's fourteen towns that have signed on. And we'd be the fifteenth, but Lowell just signed on last week.
Okay. And, and any sense for, for how much money ultimately the state will, will, we'd want the state to earmark towards this? Because I mean, education's expensive, right, so.
Right, I mean, and, and what the resolution is really doing and why they're asking us to do this and bring this forward to the select boards and to the towns, is so that everything has to go through the legislators. So to let the legislators know that, yes, this, we want it in front of them, that, yes, all these towns are supporting this. So please do your job and fund education. I mean, it's been underfunded for like the past twenty-five years. And we passed the, um, the Student Opportunity Act last year because they were underfunded like a billion dollars a year for the past twenty-five years. And it affected a lot of, um, a lot of gateway cities, I mean, more cities and things. I mean, unfortunately, Groton, Dunstable, Tingsboro, they don't get as much money from all of it, you know, because it all weighs on what the, what the needs are, but, um, yeah, just to have it in front of, I, I don't know the, um, I, I know it's a big, it's a big ask. Even to ask the legislators and the state budgets, say, hey, put all this money into. And we know it, it just takes a long time, if not ever it would really come to fruition. But I think just working for it and towards it is the important thing.
And ultimately, is this?
And ultimately, is this going to be somehow needs-based, or is it, is the intent that this would be open to all students that, that want to participate in these state, you know, community colleges and state colleges? Or is it, is it, I know we talk about the various, you know, racial and equity gaps, and social and economic. Is it, is it really geared towards, towards a sort of subset of the population, or is it, is it going to be a more broad-based?
It's going to be a broad-based, because I think they want to also try to increase the funding for the, all the different grants.
Yeah.
And they're just trying to get more money for, for everybody, not just those that really can't afford it. But that's where they're trying to help first.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Before I get back to you, Mr. Cohane.
Oh. Last but not least, is everybody...
No, I still haven't said anything.
Well, you're supposed to go through everybody first, before you.
I am.
So I still am last, but... That's fine. I'm only kidding, by the way. So, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I'm a huge advocate of education, as I'm sure everybody is here. This being higher education, I'm also a huge advocate of community college, since I actually attended a community college for two years in New York State. And they did a lot to help out, in New York State at the time, the state put in a third, the county put in a third, and then you had to put in a third, which was a pretty good system, I thought. So, you know, I'm a bit advocate for the community college. You know, when I look at this, I like a lot of the high-level goals. And there's other goals that, not being an educator or being in that field, I would probably need a lot more detail of exactly what this is. And I did hear different questions from my left and right. What are kind of more the details, how much it's going to cost, and I don't know any of that. So, you know, from that perspective, and when I look at this one, and I look at a lot of advocacy that a lot of other people do. Me personally, I've always said, when people ask me about, I'll talk about the federal government and the state government, my question, or my answer usually is, we have enough problems in Tingsborough that we're trying to solve right here. So I try not to get into those. And that's one of my big concerns, is if we, everybody that's advocating for a particular piece of the pie from the state government comes in here, we will have somebody in here quite often, right? And then every time somebody comes in here, we always like to do, understand the true details of every one of those. And I haven't, I haven't gone through, you know, the details of this. I haven't asked Dr. Flanagan, I haven't asked our representatives, why they're advocating for this. And I think it's a lot of work for us to be able to do that. And I really would prefer not to have, you know, everybody that's advocating for something in particular to come in front of, in front of this board, especially since it doesn't have a direct effect, you know, in Tingsborough. It's mostly higher education, community colleges, and, from what I can read here, anyway, right? So although, reading this, I like a lot of what it's saying. I like a lot of the goals of this, and there's other things that I don't truly understand the details. And because of that, and because I don't feel that we should be doing this as a town moving forward, I'll probably just abstain, I'm not against this, by any stretch of the imagination, but I'd probably abstain just to, you know, because I'm not really prepared to vote on this, because I don't understand the true details, you know, costs, how, how much it goes, is it going to go to graduate school, after community college? There's a lot there, and it's a very lofty goal, and I appreciate you coming in, but that's probably the way I'm going to vote tonight.
Select person Calabocas, and I'll get back to you.
I was just going to comment on what he said, but that's great.
So just going off of, you know, what's our board member Cohane was saying is, I think that's what I was trying to get at in my original question is, are we, are you looking to us to sign off on the fact that we think that this is a good goal, that we want to work towards? And should we be provided with more detail we can go in then? Or is this a comprehensive, detailed pact? This is the path that you want us specifically to endorse? Because I think that there's a big difference there, right? Because, you know, I, I tend to agree with you. I myself graduated from UMass Lowell, I'm now teaching at UMass Lowell, you know, so I'm in contact with the students a lot. I'm not far out of school myself, and school is very expensive and unattainable for some, a good majority of people. And even if it is attainable, sometimes it creates large hardships for students once they graduate, and now they have all this student debt without a job, and in today's economy, it gets really difficult. And so I think, you know, that's why I was trying to get into a little bit more about what exactly do you want us to sign on for? Because if the idea is, we recognize that this is a problem, right? I understand it's at the state level, right? But it, there is something to be said about, you know, we have high schoolers in Tingsborough who are graduating, who are going to go to college. And the idea that we want to keep them in our local town, right? If, if they can afford to go to college here, they live here. I mean, we all know, when people move away for college, sometimes they come back, and sometimes they find a significant other, and they stay there, realistically is what happens. And that kind of helps that local economy as well, so... I mean, maybe if you could give me a little bit more in that direction as to, you know, what kind of support you're looking for, right? Because if it's very high level of, we want to accomplish this goal, we got to look at the budget, see how much the, the budget can contribute, you know, all of those kinds of things, I would be more inclined to look at something like that. Again, to Senator, Senator, oh my goodness.
Senator.
Select Board Member Cohane.
Future Senator, future Senator.
What an upgrade.
Senator Cohane.
To Select Board Member Cohane's point, if it is going to get into the nitty-gritty details of asking for budget from the state and all of those things, I'm not sure that I would feel qualified at this point in time to really request those things. So maybe you could give me a little bit more info on that, what exactly you're looking for and what you hope this will do.
I don't think it would ask you to request things like directly to the state. It's just a very simple, I was just asked to bring the resolution to the select board, just to try to make you aware of what's going on, and just ask for the support, but it's nothing that you'll have to do any further. It's just a simple, we support this, and let your legislator know, and I think it just ends there. It's, it's, that's, that's all there's to it.
Great, thank you.
But I could get more information, I mean, I could talk more to the governmental relations in MTA, and, you know, if you wanted more information. I will get more information to see if, you know, I doubt you'd have to go any further, but I will find out definitely. So, and I don't, you don't have to vote on it tonight. You don't have to vote on it tonight.
That's exactly what I was looking for.
You don't need to vote on it tonight. You don't. I'm just presenting it, and you think about it. You know, I will go back and then maybe ask to come back again to do a little bit more clarification, or if you want me to do it another way, via email, or whatever, however you want me to report back to you.
Right, because I think the ultimate goal is, is fantastic, and something I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think we can all get behind something like that, right? That this is a goal in the future that we want to get behind, recognizing the difficulties in funding and financing higher education, absolutely, right? I don't want to speak for my other board members, but I think we can all get behind that concept, right? Which is fantastic.
Mr. Moran?
You know, I was just, was differentiating, because Select Board Member Cohane had mentioned Flanagan. And I know we're always looking to the state for more funds for like, the local public schools and, and stuff like that, so it was, it just caught my, my ear when he said that. I'm like, I don't know if Flanagan is for or against this, but, but I know that he's always championing the formula for the different schools that are around and what Tingsborough Public High...
Yes, yes.
And we know that, we would love that addressed as a, as a measure. But yeah, but I really appreciate and thank you for your time. There is a lot of good information online, mass, ma-legislature.gov. There's the bill H120, that's the House Representative Bill. And then the other one is a Senator Bill, which is S816.
Yes, that's what, yeah, this is.
I actually want to read those and understand a bit more about them.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're very lofty. I doubt very much that it will pass the legis, the way it works, you know, so...
No, I...
It's huge. It is absolutely huge. It's a huge bill.
Having education is the most important thing and differentiator for any human being on this planet. The more education you have, the more you realize that, you know, things aren't... Not. I'll just leave it there.
Yeah.
So, piggybacking off what, what both of you said, my concern on, on this, so let me start by saying, first off, I went to, I graduated from what was UMass Lowell, now UMass Lowell. My son goes there today. I have a college-age son that I get to pay for college, and get to pay full price for, by the way. So I appreciate education and higher education. I believe in it. I, I think that we've, we have a problem in the country with higher education being so expensive that it leaves students in debt. My concern is that, relative to the Fair Share Amendment, that there is a finite set of funds. It's for transportation and for education. I have to take off my, my personal hat and put on the hat of, you know, Select Board Member and look at what's best for the town. And that's where I'm concerned, you know, how much money is it? What, what is the impact going to be on our public school education? You know, we've already, we had Senator Kennedy and Representative Gary in here, and we said the formula is broken. It, we are going to be in big trouble as a town if the formula stays the same. And, and, you know, we keep hearing that the path to addressing that, at least partially, is through the Fair Share Amendment. And I look at it and say, okay, do we now have competing, you know, folks, we just dealt with the roads. And so we sit there and say, we've got all these competing things. And it, I know that it's not a this or that, and I don't want it to, to, you know, it's never going to be that way. It's not like we do that in town, that it's either public safety or the roads. No, it, it's an and. But the question is going to be, i- if we go really bold, and I think some of these things are bold, and I, and I, I think it's great to have bold aspirations, but I think we need to make sure that they're balanced. And that, you know, the, the thing I struggle with is that i- if, if we advocate for this, does it put the town in a, a more difficult position relative to the public school folks that we do have to address? You know, we're required by law to address their education. The only other thing that I would say, and I, I echo Slagman Cohane's...
Senator Cohane.
Just, there's, there's a lot here. I'm, I don't feel comfortable that I could vote on it. I do have some concerns in the resolution itself, and maybe we need to look at some of the language, because I don't, I, I don't want to get into countrywide politics and things like that. I think we have enough problems here in town that I, that I don't want to address that. There, there are some things that I have some concerns in, in how we might support it. So I, I think we're going to have to, one of the, one of the reasons why, when Colin said, hey, want to put this on the agenda, I said, yes, put it on the agenda. I think it's something for us to talk about. I think it's something that, after this, we want, we need to talk as a board just to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we as a board address these types of things that aren't directly related to the town administration? But people come to us and say, we'd like, you know, support on those types of things. Just so that we can, you know, we're all in agreement, or at least we have a, a common understanding of how we want to address those. I think this is, personally, I think it's great. I think that we need to do more to educate people. I think we need to provide more opportunities to educate our people. I think it's a shame what we do today. But I don't know that this board is the, the right vehicle for that, and I still need to find out. And then I, how we do that, I think I need to just get a better feel, so... I'm thinking that I'm not ready to vote on it, and that we could get some more information and then continue this at maybe our next meeting, or one of those, just to, to see where it is. I would be concerned if we were, you know, the last town signing on, or, or any of those. It sounds like we're, we're pretty early in that process. But I would like to, one, find out more information, and then, two, discuss as a board whether this is the type of thing that we, we, we can get behind, or should be getting behind. So, yes.
I mean, I don't mind taking time to review and do all those things. But I, I would say that I do think that this is tied directly to Tingsborough in that our high schoolers are going to college, and this is something that's going to really affect them. So I, I do think that as a board, it is something that we have the authority to look at. And I, I don't think that it's separate than getting funding for other things. And I, you know, I just, I'd like to stress that I, I do think it's very related to our residents, and it does have an impact on Tingsborough. I, I don't think that it's separate. Of course, there are issues that where that is the case, but this one, I think, directly ties to our residents. And I think that that's probably why we should, not to, not today, if there's not comfort level today, but why it should be reviewed and addressed, because it, it does impact our residents. It's not like it's a national, it is national to a certain extent, right? But our students are going to go to college. You know, I don't know how many of Tingsborough high schoolers go to college. I'm assuming a large majority of them actually attend college, and I'm sure a large majority of them, you know, attend one of those col, there, how many did you list there? Four or five? Salem State, UMass Lowell, Middlesex, Northern Essex?
Northern Essex, not five. Salem State, I think there's five.
There's like five of them, right? There's a large state-based community, you know, that we're lucky enough to have here, that I'm sure our Tingsborough residents utilize, so... Again, if, if we don't want to vote today, I'm very comfortable with that, getting some more information and coming back. I just thought that that was important.
And I agree with you, by the way, which is why it's on the agenda. If I didn't think it was that way, it might not have been on the agenda, and we'd have a little bit more. But I, I, I agree. I mean, I think it's, it's something that does impact us. I just don't know that I have enough info. I mean, if, is there anybody feel like they have enough info to support the resolution as is right now?
Hi, Don.
I mean, the resolution is, at, at the end of the day, the resolution is, do we support this ultimate goal, right? If, if you look at it, right, I understand that there's, I understand that there's, you know, the whole bill and all that stuff. But i- if you go through the resolution, they always have whereas, whereas, whereas. Explain the problem, explain the problem, we know the problem. And then it says, therefore, what are they asking us to do? Be it resolved that they want us to insert Tingsborough, urges the legislature to pass the act and support additional funding for public higher education, provided that a copy of this resolution shall forthwith be sent, right? So they're just saying, we are agreeing that we want more funds to be allocated in some way, shape, or form to, to this higher education initiative, right? Whatever that additional funding may be, right? I don't think we're going to get a level of detail before... You have to pass this saying that there's support behind it, and then they go in and they look at the budget and the numbers and the, you know, then they come back and we do it again. So I'm, I'm not sure how much more information outside of what's in the paperwork could realistically be provided. I don't know if you have additional, right? But the idea or supporting the concept, I don't think is, in my opinion, that... I don't want to use the word difficult, but we all support the cause, right, and the initiative behind it. And I don't think that there's too much of a risk in saying we actually support it. We're not saying we want them to move budget immediately or anything like that. But again, there's nothing bad, I, I agree, there's nothing bad in doing due diligence, right? If people want to look over the packets some more, want to read, you know, I think I read these things a lot, so it takes me a lot less time to go through them and digest them, right? But if, if others want to review and ask questions and do more, absolutely. I think that then due diligence is good. I just also think that the risk with this is low. We're not asking for specifics, we're just asking to support an initiative.
Thank you.
But that's just one opinion.
Agreed. So I agree with you. And I let you write the, the resolution and support. I just, I mean, because the wherethes that you had were good.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, the US Supreme Court's destructive decision on affirmative action and some of those things. I just, I like what you said. It's like, you know what, we need to educate our people, we need to come all the way. And I sit there, it's, so, I, I'm hearing, unless anybody wants to make a motion, that we'll get a little bit more info. Our support may come in a slightly different format than what is here, or we'll have to discuss that as a, as a board.
And we can change the whereas.
I totally agree.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's...
Yes.
That's all I'm saying, I just, but, and, and then maybe we get a little bit more, and I think it would be good. I, I would like to understand from Senator Kennedy, who's, who's on this, just to sit there and take, not Senator Cohane, but Senator Kennedy, to understand his thinking on this and, and, you know...
It's never going to be the same.
Is this something where I, I just need some, a little bit of assurance to say, you know, we're not going to go all in on higher education and ignore... know, we're not going to go all in on higher education and ignore, you know, the public school needs. So, there, there's a little bit more homework. I, I, I appreciate you bringing this and, and bringing it to us, because I do think it's important. I do think it's, I mean, we voted for the Fair Share Act as, as a state. We need to make sure that the, the money is used wisely and effectively. And this is, you know, one of the initial forays into that.
And I appreciate your discussion, because it's even helping me. I mean, I want to go back and say to them, clarify, you know, my question, is there a risk in supporting this resolution for the town, or, or the board, understanding that you're responsible for what goes on locally here in Tingsboro, not the whole entire state of Massachusetts? So, I think your discussion, I wrote some things down, and I, even for myself, to find out these answers and concerns, I think it was very, very helpful for me. Absolutely.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
For coming and sharing it.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
All right, good discussion. All right. Change of officers. American Legion Post 247, 90 Pawtucket Boulevard. Kat, is that you?
Uh, yes. Jackie's absence. Included in your packet this evening is an application from the American Legion Post 247 for a change of officers for the on-premise all-alcohol license issued to the facility at 90 Pawtucket Boulevard. As recalled, the Legion recently requested change of manager. After review by the ABCC, it was noted that a list of officers needed updating in order to have an appropriate signature on file. Thus, the American Legion is requesting this update. A request for comment was sent to departments with jurisdiction, and there was no adverse comments.
Any questions, comments from the board?
I have a question. Is, is this the gentleman who showed up a couple of weeks ago and was moved into the manager position?
Yeah, they're talking about the officers. So, there's the manager, and then there's the officers as well.
But is this, like, if you just, okay. I just wanted to, it was lovely to meet those people, those wonderful people who, who do the service with town, or for the American Legion, I'm sorry. That was just my question. Thank you.
And to clarify, they're not changing manager, they're just updating their list of officers. The manager, this is all part of that same paperwork.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
I will take a motion.
I move that the select board approve the application for the change of officers for American Legion Post 247 located at 90 Pawtucket Boulevard as presented.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries 500. Contract approval, Republic Services for curbside waste and recycling hauling. I know you, this is like your favorite topic.
It really is. As you will remember, at the end of last year, last fiscal year, the town negotiated a one-year extension with Republic Services. Our prior five-year contract had expired. And at the time, we were curious to make sure that, one, we were receiving the best service that we could, and, two, that we were getting it at the best price. We started relatively late at, in that cycle, and so, we ended up giving just a one-year extension to Republic Services, which was intended to buy us time to do some more homework. As a part of the one-year extension, Republic also included an optional four-year renewal of that. Over the winter, I worked with our health director and the Board of Health Administrative Assistant to solicit additional proposals for our waste contract. We received two proposals, one from Republic and one from Harvey and Sons. Both were competitive, and both are from well-respected leaders in the industry. After much analysis, it was determined that the four-year renewal that you have before you from Republic Services was the most advantageous proposal for the town. The agreement represents close to a 4% overall increase in the contract, and at our request, Republic dropped the penalty that was added last year that charged 1.9% on top of that, because we have a longstanding contract with Covanta and Haverhill as a part of the Covanta eight. So, Republic picks up your trash, but they bring it to Covanta, which dispose of it, dispose of it. Last year, Republic opened a facility in Devens, and in an attempt to incentivize, I guess would be the word, municipalities to send their waste to Devens, they added this new language, basically penalizing, they wouldn't use that word, I do, penalizing a municipality for not going with Republic. We did, as a part of reviewing our contract with Covanta, look at Republic's rates at Devens, and they were $3 per ton higher than what we were getting at Covanta. So, financially, it made no sense. And Republic was very good. This is something that Republic Corporate, obviously Republic is an international company, this is something that they added, but our local team here in Tingsboro was very responsive to our request that they eliminate that 1.9%. We saw it as kind of an unfair business practice. They were charging us more to go with them. We wanted to save money, but now they were trying to negate that. So, they did agree to remove it. So, overall with Republic, it's a 4% increase. We also talked about performance. There are two things that we get a lot of calls about. One is roads, one is trash. We have seen a tremendous improvement in Republic's performance over the last year, and a lot of that has to do with our Board of Health and our administrative assistant over there. They've developed a system that works for both sides, where we keep track via Google Sheet that they have access to, and in real time, we're watching Republic pick up the missed pickups. So, for that reason, I also want to note that Harvey ended up coming in slightly cheaper, but when we looked at it, it was $10,000 a year cheaper than Republic. We think that there are far more administrative expenses that would go into making such a change. Another big piece here is that with, with Harvey, they wanted to take over completely selling the bulky item stickers. So, where you come into Town Hall right now and for $15 can dispose of a bulky item, under the agreement with Harvey, they would have taken that over and had sole control over the prices. So, while on paper, the town's operating budget was potentially saving 10 grand a year, in all likelihood, residents were now going to be paying more to dispose of things. So, for that reason, I'm recommending that the board extend, or approve, the four-year contract with Republic Services as included here. Because this contract exceeds three years, it requires the select board approval. This new contract would commence on July 1st, 2024, and would expire on June 30th, 2028.
Questions from the board? Colin, 4% increase, that is year one?
Uh, it could also potentially be year two. The contract ties it to the Consumer Price Index.
Right.
Right now, it's just below 4%. So, next year, it would increase by that percentage of whatever we paid this year.
Right. So, the, the net on it, it's an annual increase.
Correct.
The first one is 4%, because it's, it's tied to their, you know, the, the contract language says that, you know, basically, it's annual rate adjustments is, is based on the, the CPI.
Correct. And I should note-
And it's not to a C5%, correct. That's important for people to know. The, and that's something you've got to manage. So, proposition two and a half, two and a half, we're at 4%, could be, could be more, up to five, that's in there. The, the other thing is, with Harvey, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have had to go different days?
Yeah.
As opposed to, it would change how, people right now, kind of, like, today was a trash day. Everybody knows it's trash day, and it might be recycle. If we changed, think, think of the impact for saving $10,000.
Harvey would have required five-day-a-week pickup. Now, there, there are some advantages in that Harvey's got trucks in town every day of the week, so missed pickup is a little bit easier. But certainly, you're right, for $10,000, I think we may have quite a few unhappy residents at the change. And, and this is not a reflection of Harvey. They were great putting together proposals for us. They have great references. They recently took over Westford's waste contract, but at the end of the day, obviously, we follow the money, and our savings are with Republic.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, they did a good job. They gave us a competitive offer. It gave us a lot to think about, but ultimately, I think that this is the right way to go. To, with Republic, I think that they have improved service. And, and that's going to need to continue. We're going to have to keep on them about that. Is there anything in the contract relative to out clauses if their services, any service degradation and...
Yeah, as with all of our vendor contracts, we require clauses that allow us to terminate for performance. Even with the issues, I know probably about two years ago, we had a particularly challenging year. Even in that point, I think we weren't quite at that threshold, but certainly, all of our vendor contracts include provisions for us to exit the contract for performance challenges.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's a question.
Yeah.
So, does, this contract covers both just regular trash pickup and recycling?
Correct.
And are there, are there, are there any sort of goals or assumptions built into what percentage of, of weight is going to recycling versus regular trash?
Not within this contract. I mean, I, the more they pick up on either side, the more money they make. One of the things that I'll say is that, through the work of the Sustainability Committee, the less that we are disposing, whether it's because people are using the compost site that's available at the Highway Department, or they're recycling at that recycling center, we're saving money.
Right.
But from a business perspective, I think Republic will never admit this, but they're a business, the more they collect, the more money they make. So, it's on us. We, we're doing the internal goal setting, and I think that that's come through clear through the work that the Sustainability Committee has done and is pushing us to continue to do.
So, so if, if, if we're as successful as a town in, in, in reducing the amount of overall trash, whether it's three, the recyc- recycling or, or just, just non-recyclable, do we see a savings in this contract?
Oh, absolutely.
Based on that weight?
This contract is strictly based on the tonnage they pick up from us. So, if we have a really remarkable year, and we cut our tonnage in half, our trash bill with Republic will entirely be, it will be a, a half of what we would normally pay. And the same is experienced on our disposal contract with Covanta. If we send Covanta half of the tonnage that we did last year, we're experiencing a reduction in that. So, this contract doesn't guarantee Republic a minimum, if you will.
Yeah.
They will strictly get paid for the tonnage they pick up from us.
So, I think that's an important message to get out, that, that, you know, to your point, Mr. Chair, you know, we're a prop two and a half world, and this is going up by four, maybe five percent. The way we can all control this is by using less, throwing away less, you know, we do have, we do have some, some control over this.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any-
I'll just add one more thing. So, you know, we just had Zero Waste Day, you know, this past weekend. And, you know, the residents really have taken to this. They have it twice a year, and the amount of waste that, that goes in there, instead of going into our waste stream, is actually recycled or reused and whatever, right? So, and Sustainability, they, they did a calculation. They do a lot of calculations as it relate, relates to trash and recycling. You know, they figure they saved us $50,000 a year, just on what we do on Zero Waste Day. And this is another plug for the Highway Department. At the Highway Department, we have a lot of capabilities there, too, from cardboard to the food waste, and then we have scrap metal. And scrap metal, let me tell you, so, I go there, and every time I go there, the scrap metal thing is full. That's a huge dumpster. Scrap metal is a lot of waste. Just, if we just calculate what we save that didn't go in the trash, it's going into that dumpster, and we actually get money for the, what comes out of that dumpster. It saves us a lot. So, the more the residents can help us out by recycling, you know, you, the Highway Department, and however they do it, reduce waste in their, their trash. Composting is a, is a huge thing. You know, 30% of the waste is compostable materials. So, you know, anything that anybody can do, it just helps out the town and our finances.
Thank you.
I move that the select board approve the contract with Republic Services and authorize the town manager to execute, execute the agreement on its behalf.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries 500. Okay, compensated absence fund transfer. Police Department sick time buyout.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier this year, Lieutenant Michael Casella, a longtime member of the Tingsboro Police Department, retired after a distinguished career. Under the terms of the Superior Union Contract, which he was covered by, he was entitled to a payout for his unused sick time. I would note that this benefit is not offered to newer employees, but it is grandfathered for a select number of employees who are the more longstanding senior officers. At some point, we negotiated that out, and obviously, anyone who was previously eligible for the benefit continues to be. But when we hire new folks, they are not eligible for that benefit. The total payout for his sick time was $46,103.24. Certainly, that's an unbudgeted liability that the police department's budget could not afford. Fortunately, the town of Tingsboro had the foresight to plan for these types of payouts by establishing what's called a compensated absence fund. Under the authority of the select board, this fund serves as a buffer to help cover these large unbudgeted expenses. As of today, there's a balance of $125,904 available for expenditure by a vote of this board. So, due to the size of the payout that I referenced above, and the substantial impact this would have on the police department's budget, I'm seeking a vote of the select board to transfer the sum of $46,103.24 from the compensated absence fund to the police department's salary line to cover the sick time payout for Lieutenant Casella.
Any, any sense for how many other employees in the town are covered under this sort of umbrella?
Yes. At this point, we are down to less than a handful.
Okay. And, and do you have a, a feeling that, you know, after we take this, say we approve this $46,000 transfer, we're down to about $80,000? Do we have an adequate amount in that fund, do you feel?
For now, I think that it's worth looking in the next two fiscal years to see if there's, you know, even if it was a $30,000 or $40,000 transfer from free cash.
Yeah.
This is also di- difficult to project, because a lot of it depends on specific circumstances. A lot of times, if somebody's planning for retirement, they can start to use that time leading up to it. Sometimes you can't plan for the retirement. So, I, I feel comfortable for the next couple of years, certainly, that we have enough in the compensated absence fund, but it would be prudent for us in the next two or three years-
Yeah.
-to make some sort of a deposit into the-
Yeah, if we think we have a big unfunded liability, certainly, we want to start building at it now.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I move that the select board authorize a transfer of $46,103.24 from the compensated absence fund to the police department's salary line as described above.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries 500. Okay, one-day liquor license.
Included in your packet this evening is an application from Rebecca Barisano, requesting an all-alcohol one-day liquor license for a birthday slash anniversary party to be held on Saturday, May 25th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Approximately 100 guests are expected. You will find a copy of the server tip certification, along with a copy of the certificate of liability insurance. The applicant has been advised by the Board of Health requirements if the event will be catered. We asked all relevant departments for comments, and there is no adverse comments. The Board of Health did comment that if the event is catered, they would be required to provide a caterer's notification. However, the applicant has been advised of this, and has indicated that the event will not be catered.
The only question I had is, so, it's not catered, but we have a liquor license with 100 guests? Is there no food being served, and...
The catering piece only, you can bring your own food without triggering a requirement from the Board of Health. The only time you would, this form is only if you're, say, having, you know, casadores cater. They just have to register that they're doing it. But there would likely be food, even if it wasn't catered. It'd be just people bringing it in.
Okay. I just know that, and I assume we've got this covered, because we had some challenges in the recent past with perhaps some people being overserved. I hope that we've got that covered.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I move that the select board approve the application for an all-alcohol one-day liquor license for the Rebecca Barisano for a birthday anniversary party to be held at Old Town Hall at 10 Kendall Road on Saturday, May 25th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. as presented.
Before I second it, I guess it's not going to be a surprise party. I second it.
Good point. We certainly take the fun out of that.
Not everybody watches this meeting, by the way.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries 500. License renewal. I think this is one that people might be eager to hear about.
Absolutely. The Player One Entertainment, which this board granted licenses to in 2023, is, has notified our office that they're close to open. I drove by the other day. It does appear that they are ready to turn the key any moment. In talking to them about what they need, they're still finalizing their ABCC license. This board issued it. The ABCC sent back twice comments to them that needed to be addressed. They've indicated that they expect approval from the ABCC this week. Because they haven't been operating, we haven't had them renew the licenses that you issued, but because they're not changing anything in the original license, what we're looking for tonight is the board to renew the licenses. We're in the middle of the year, so they would expire on December 31st, 2024. We're still waiting on the fees to be paid for the renewal, so the motion includes that the approval is contingent on the payment of all fees and submission of the required insurance documents.
And this is a renewal, not a new license- And this is a renewal, not a new license, so it's not cutting into the, because we had four at 440.
You're only renewing the local licenses. The ABCC license, you haven't been able to renew because it hasn't been issued yet. So this one is accounted for in that four, since your vote took place before it expired.
Got it.
The ABCC hasn't issued it, but our argument would be, we started the process before the expiration.
Okay. Other questions, comments from the Board?
Oh, yes. Are they planning a ribbon-cutting event?
I would imagine that as soon as they tell me they got their ABCC license, that would be our next conversation. I still haven't seen the ABCC approval, though, so.
Thank you.
I move that the Select Board approve the license renewal for Player One Entertainment at 440 Middlesex Road as presented, contingent on the payment of all applicable fees and submission of required insurance documents.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 5-0-0. Old Business: Town Manager's Evaluation Review slash Approve. So at our last meeting, Colin had provided his self-evaluation, which was, I know shockingly, very detailed and well-written and covered a lot of stuff. I solicited feedback, and I have added in my comments in a separate document that I had shared with the Board first and is now in the packet. Unfortunately, I had to share it with Colin because, you know, we were going to talk about it. So hopefully, he got a chance to read it. But essentially, you know, the highlights from my perspective is that I agree with Colin's assessment of his performance over the last eight months. It will be nine months from this, at the end of the year, as being excellent. I think he's done a fantastic job. I think that while we had high expectations, I think the transition has been very smooth. I think that while he inherited a good team and, you know, good department heads and a lot of stability that's in there, I think, you know, his work ethic and his attention to detail has been just what we need. I, in addition to some of the areas that might be in there, I tried to highlight some of the areas that I thought are in addition to just day-to-day. You know, I think the budgeting and planning process is critical right now. We are navigating difficult fiscal times, and I think that his ability to look at those things has been excellent again. I think that the projects that we've had ongoing, he was, he had to hit the ground running on a bunch of those projects. You know, the DPW, things going on at the Winslow School, bicentennial, a whole slew of things that he listed off in there, and I know Kat's been involved in a lot of those, too. So a lot of this good stuff, it falls on you, but hopefully, that doesn't put you in a difficult position. You know, I think that the challenges that we faced with the free cash was, you know, hey, welcome, here's your first day, and oh, by the way, we need to clean this up. And I think that not only was the issue addressed, but I think the root cause of the issues was addressed, and that was critical for us as a Board and as a town. I think that, you know, Colin steps right in, and he's a leader. He's at town events and engaged. People, you know, feel comfortable. He's approachable, which I think is critical for that role. You know, and I think the support that he gives to this Board, and again, Jackie and Kat, same way, we're always, you know, prepared because things are done in a timely manner. The agenda's pulled together quickly, and, you know, with plenty of time, we have time to look at content. So, you know, I think that from a performance standpoint, I think it's been as good as I could have hoped. You know, whenever there's a change in, not only, you know, a role as important as town manager, but town manager was new to Tingsboro. So, you know, a lot of roles and responsibilities were not as well-defined as you might think, and Colin was able to step in and address those. You know, I think that we need to figure out how we best support Colin in the future. He identified things around finance, and I think that we have, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we support him in any way that we can to get some of that. I think there's going to be a great opportunity with the middle school debt to learn an awful lot and be hands-on in some things, you know, around finance. And maybe we look at, you know, just make sure that we have enough third-party expertise on that. And, you know, I think that we now have a process to go through goals as a Board and then as a town manager. So I don't think we need to make many changes. So I, you know, I put all that in there, and if anybody in the town would like to look at the details of both what Colin put in there and what I did, it's out there. But that's my take. Anybody have anything that they would like to add? I'm sure I missed some things, so.
I think I could summarize my thoughts with just four words. Leadership, transition, accountability, and trust. And I give you high marks on all those, and they're all interrelated, you know. You came in as a very strong leader. You, 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 you know, people trust you because you're a known quantity. You've been here before. You've demonstrated accountability. You know, when we ran into problems for free cash, you know, it stopped at your desk. It wasn't a, you know, it's his fault, it's her fault, it's their fault. And by building that trust among your team, I think, yes, you inherited a great team, but anytime there's transition, there's issues, right? And I think the fact that folks trust you by and large is really worked towards building a success. So thank you.
Colin.
Senator.
Senator?
So I've worked with Colin quite a while here, and, you know, one of the things, as I always say, when he was the Assistant Town Manager, we went through a lot of different critical times, critical issues that we were up against, and I would always talk to Matt Hanson about those, and I would talk to Colin about those. And many times, after Colin and I discussed something, usually it was Colin's idea, not mine, I'd say, you know, tell Matt that's a great way of thinking about this, another way of talking about this particular issue. So, you know, having worked that closely with Colin, when it came time to, you know, have a new town manager, I was a huge advocate of Colin, and I knew he could do the job. There was never a question in my mind that he could do this job, and he's done it. One of the things that people may not know also is that Colin hates it when people talk about Colin. He can talk at a town meeting, he can talk about any issue or anything else, but when you talk about, when Colin's in front of you and you talk about Colin, he gets a little bit squeamish over there, as you can see he is right now. So I just wanted to state that because I had to have at least a little bit of a roast of you tonight, just a little bit. But, you know, we knew there was going to be challenges when Colin came on board. You know, you already mentioned free cash. We weren't expecting that. He just tackled it. You know, when he looks at the current processes that we have, you know, he can, he looks at the process, and then if he thinks it can be improved, he improves it. You know, we saw a little bit of a gap in procurement process, nothing critical or anything. But, you know, he looked at it and goes, oh, is one organization doing things a little bit differently? And let's just streamline that. So he's been able to do things in the background that most of us don't even know because as a town manager, he has the authority to do that. And I just want to add, if he was a town administrator ready to go through this transition, it would be a lot more difficult. That it was a town manager that he has the power, the authority to be able to do this has just made stuff, you know, so much easier. But I think Colin's performance has been excellent. We had a few more challenges than I was expecting when he came on, but he was able to tackle those, including the free cash, which everybody discussed, which was a really big issue. But he was able to tackle that, just like all the other issues. Oh, the last thing I did want to say, you know, we can give him, you know, a lot of glowing reviews, and, you know, that's great. But I think the residents, I know the residents have also given him the glowing reviews. We received emails from people that are very vocal in town, and they have commended him immensely on how transparent he has been, how the communication has improved and everything else. And I think that's a huge point that I want to make, that the residents have also stated that Colin's doing an excellent, excellent job.
Good work, Colin.
Thank you.
It's the last thing I'll talk to you about tonight, okay?
Mr. Moran.
Yeah, so I will echo some of the comments that, I mean, Select Board member Colin has said. I, too, when we were doing the discussion about who would succeed Matt in, you know, townwide search, statewide search, all that stuff, you look around. After we had the vote or the job offer and all that stuff, it, the phrase kept coming up was, he's the right guy, he's the right guy, he's the right guy. That's really an awesome statement to hear from the residents. Yeah, we can play around up here, have some fun and poke fun at, but really, it's the residents who matter and what they're saying. And so that's, that's great. Thank you for all you've done in the short stint you've had as the town manager, and we look forward to more from you and obviously, the Assistant Town Manager as well.
Thank you.
Select President Calabocas.
Giving me an opportunity to say nice things about Colin. That's my favorite part. That's my favorite part. Well, I am...
I don't want to bear some too much, though.
Yeah, I, well, I'm actually thrilled, thrilled to be here talking to you guys today about Colin Loisel, our town manager. Thrilled. But in all seriousness, yes, I think to echo a lot of what was said before me, I think the biggest word here is trust. And it's not only trust within the Board, but it's trust from the community as well, right? There are some topics that we discuss that tend to be a little bit more polarizing sometimes. Maybe some residents' ideas that are a little bit more polarizing. And regardless of who you speak to, the common factor is always a trust in Colin to do what is fair and to take everybody's concerns seriously. And I think that that is something that shouldn't be overlooked because sometimes in the day-to-day, in the grind of what it means to be town manager, it's easy to put some people's fears to the side or not get back to emails or phone calls or not spend the time with residents. And Colin does a really great job of listening to everybody and letting them know what he thinks is fair and why, right? And that's a big difference from yes-ing somebody, and it's a big difference from ignoring somebody, right? Colin actually takes the time to sit there and say, look, here's what we're doing, here's why I think it's fair. Let me explain it to you. If they don't understand, he'll find a different way to explain it to you. He's taken time to incorporate charts for those who can only read charts. Pie charts specifically, right? And I think that that's important. And again, as we've heard here previously, right, trust within the Board that when we ask something to get done, it gets done, it gets done right. If something happens, if there's a hiccup, if there needs correction, there's transparency in it, and we know that we can reroute quickly because we've identified the problem and we've dealt with it, right? And I think that that's why Colin is a huge asset to the town.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So I guess the good news, bad news is, the good news is that excellent review. Do we need to formally vote on that as our recommendation? I think we do. The negative part is now the expectations are even higher. So, you know, you're going to have to just keep getting better every day.
Could I, could I just respond briefly? I want to thank the Board. I think, you know, there's a lot of talk about the challenges that we faced early on, but I think those, while they were substantial in some cases, I think there was a lot, there is a lot more good, unchallenging things that are happening. I think that's why it's important to get department heads out to meetings like this because there's a lot of really good things happening in all of our departments, at the hands of department heads who know their subject matter, who know the people they're working with. I see my job as kind of a facilitator, but certainly, all of our department heads that are coordinating these efforts are really the ones that are doing the on-the-ground work to put on events and programs and provide services that are not just responding to our immediate needs, but like with our conversation with Barbara, challenging ourselves to adapt to future needs. And certainly, Kat and Jackie are tremendous assets that have helped that transition be smooth. But I'm appreciative of the Board's support, the town's support. We hear a lot from residents, and while it's easy for people in roles like ours to brush off emails from residents or persistent phone calls, I think one of the things that we've found is that sometimes they're on to something, and they have the idea that you didn't think of because they're in the community and they're talking to people. So we welcome all sorts of feedback. And I think that you, you know, that's what we're seeing as we change processes and make things more efficient. It's really driven by residents reaching out to us, and that's what our whole push about communicating more is. Government doesn't have to be bureaucratic. It doesn't have to be full of red tape. It certainly doesn't have to be intimidating or hard to understand. At the end of the day, we're literally here to provide a service for residents. And so the more information we give to the community, the more they have a chance to, in between their very busy lives, digest it and provide us feedback. Collaboratively and collectively, we're making great things happen. So I appreciate the support and would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work that our staff do every single day.
Yes. Kudos to them as well. So with that, can I get a motion to, I guess, accept the performance review and then officially note it as excellent?
Second?
How about so moved?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 5-0-0. Excellent. Okay. Select Board reports.
I'll start with me.
All right. Katerina, we're going to start with you.
Sure. So today, today, it's nighttime. So tonight is actually my last Select Board report. Yes, it is. Tonight is, this is my last Select Board meeting. So I just wanted to take a moment to really thank everybody, both on the Board and those watching, the residents, for giving me the opportunity to serve for these past three years. When you sign up to be a Select Board member, you don't know at the outset exactly how it's going to affect you in your life. And I have had the fantastic opportunity of working, you know, alongside great Board members and also with residents who I hope to keep a relationship with far into the future. And one thing I really wanted to leave everybody with is while I won't be sitting in this seat, I will absolutely still be around, and I would encourage anybody to continue to reach out to me. I'll be coming to events. I'll be around, right? I'm not leaving. I'm not going away, right? I'm just not able to sit in this seat anymore. It's also important for me to let the residents know that I have the utmost belief in faith in the person who will be taking over my spot here. I think they will do a fantastic job. I am very excited for Tingsboro's future. I will be following it closely while continuing to be involved. And I really want to leave the residents with a huge thank you for allowing me to serve you over these years because it was, it was a great honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Moran.
Jeez, I can't follow that. Well, thank you for the three years that you've been on the Board. It's been a pleasure serving alongside you, and I don't have any further comments, but thank you again.
Mr. Schneider.
Just a reminder that Tuesday is Election Day. And though a lot of the positions this year were unopposed, it's important, right? It's important that, as a town, we get out, we vote, we cast our ballots. And equally important that in succeeding elections, that we run for office, right? It's healthier when elections are contested. We don't want to just hand a position off to someone. But the first step, obviously, is voting. So see you on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the residents that showed up for town meeting. You know, we had some topics there that we knew were going to be a little, take a lot of debate and whatever. And I was just very enthused to see, you know, everybody talking about the MBTA. In a lot of communities, it was a huge issue, and a lot of them voted it down. And, you know, I think Colin and Eric and Eric did a good job of communicating why we thought it should pass. And, you know, when I really was listening to the residents speak, you know, it sounded like they truly understood why we thought it should pass. you know, it sounded like they, they truly understood why we wanted to do this, and we had done everything possible to meet what we had to do, but very thoughtfully. And, you know, to pass at the, at almost like eighty to twenty or something like that was just an amazing vote. And I just want to thank everybody for that vote and for all your votes at town meeting. Should I say something about Kat, about Caterina now, or should I wait?
You can say what you would like.
Oh, Caterina. Caterina's turn. So Caterina, three years ago, you decided to run for this board. Let's say Tingsborough was in the news quite a bit at that time, and a lot of it was not positive. But you wanted to make an impact on the community that you grew up in. And you really did make an impact. You know, you really watched this town, as we talked about earlier in Colin's review. We, you watched this town. You advocated for this town to do a town manager. We went from a small-town government to a professionally-run government, which is such a huge, huge impact to this town. A lot of people don't realize what it is, but, you know, previous selectmen that got up and spoke, you know, at that town meeting, all agree. You know, we, we need to have a town manager, right? You know, sometimes you have a three-year run, and you don't have that many contentious, you know, town meetings. I think except for one, we had, everyone was a little, that had an issue that we needed to address. You know, our motto that time was to move forward. You know, anything that we saw that we thought the residents should have a chance to vote on, we did it, no matter how hard it was. And a lot of them really were hard. Some of them had been out there for 20 years. Some people don't know that the highway department had DPW sweatshirts from 20 years ago because they wanted to move that forward, and it never got to a vote. We got it to a vote, and it passed. Same thing with Winslow School. For 20 years, the residents get a chance to vote. And we all stated, we think the residents deserve a chance to vote on that, and we did it. So, you know, we, all the hard issues, any hard issue that we had, our thought process was the residents deserve a chance to vote. Let's do a research on this and move it forward. So thank you for all that. You know, and I've always said, too, that, you know, if, if there was ever an idea that we should, you know, bring in front of the town, I really think we should come up with the idea, and Caterina should be the one to articulate it because she never misspeaks. Of course, until tonight. I am not Senator Cohen. So her last meeting, she got right to this point, and the last meeting, she misspoke. But, you know, if that's the worst we can say about you, thank you very much for your service, Caterina. I'll miss all the discussions, and it's been a pleasure really getting a chance to know you.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up the election, town meeting. We talked about Zero Waste Day.
You have nothing to say, no?
Oh, no, I got plenty to say. So I totally forgot that this was your last meeting. Not. Of course, we had some things prepared. Three years ago, you and I, we ran for the select board, and the town overwhelmingly voted us in because they wanted some change. And over the last three years, a lot of that change has happened. And we've done that collectively. It hasn't been one person. It, it, it's being done collectively. I've always appreciated your different perspective. You know, we all come at it from different angles, and I think it's critical to have different views on things. I appreciate your strength to say what you felt was right, regardless of what other people might say or, or think or what had already been said. It has been a great opportunity to work with you over the last three years. And as I said the last time, I hope that this is just a little pause in your public service because I think that you, you have tremendous potential to not only, you know, do the right thing, but I think to, to make change happen, good change happen.
Maybe you become a senator someday.
Maybe. I'm thinking. So with that, I've got a couple of things that I'd like to, to, to present you. One of them, I was going through my, my basement, and I found one of the signs. I think it's...
You stole her sign?
No, I picked them up when we were going through. And I said, I keep telling her, I'm like, I still have your sign. And she's like, don't worry about it.
I think they're recyclable.
So, yes. So I, I had to get that out of my, out of my basement because I think it was really important.
It's still dusty.
Dusty.
It's still dusty.
Dusty still. Thanks, Eric. It's a little dusty.
Authentic.
What, I was going to say, what would you, would you expect anything different?
It's perfect.
And then finally, I would like to present you with this plaque on behalf of the select board and the town.
Thank you very much.
And you're, Colin's going to get a, a great picture of us.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you've done. Come here. So with, I didn't know if you, if you wanted to add anything else.
Rebutted, you want to rebuttal?
I, I, I wanted to let you go first because I thought you might want to hear what everybody said, and then maybe I'll give you another opportunity. It's up to you.
Thank you for this. I should have saved my speech for not now, would have been the appropriate time for that. But no, I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for this award. And I think, you know, it means a lot coming from Selectman Eldridge because running together really was a journey. And, you know, coming in at the same time, it's, it's always a great privilege to have what I consider a learning buddy, right? Somebody who you can actually bounce real ideas off of. And I think the real growth happens when you respectfully disagree, right? And I think there, I had a lot of personal growth on this board, just bouncing my ideas off Selectman Eldridge and him bouncing his ideas back on me. And it means a lot to have learned this position together. And I appreciate the support from the whole board because that was something I think that I've had the privilege of experiencing with everybody up here, right? Is the constructive dialogue, and I hope that that continues after I leave because it means a lot, and I think that that's what pushes the town forward. So thank you again. I sincerely appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Now we got all of that out of the way. Before we go into executive session, election 21st. There is early voting going on during town hall hours. Our next meeting, or the board's next meeting, will be June 3rd. And there's also one coming up on the 24th. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the select board enter into executive session under exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of public works, and police chief.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Schneider.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That carries five zero zero. Thank you, folks. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.